Thank you. Um, so this work session is so that everybody could be together to discuss options for future county office space or county space just in general. Um, there are two options that have been brought to the table so far, and I can talk about the first one at least initially. And then I believe Sheriff has detail on the other. The first that we were talking about was some property in Laramie. Um, that is currently listed for sale. Um, that has more than enough space for what we need. And is within, I think about a mile and a half or so of the existing courthouse. Um, and what we, we being myself and Bailey and Jake had discussed was building, a new building for county services, which would take everything not court-related out of the courthouse and move to this new building eventually. That would then include incorporating both the public health and WIC space and what is now the annex that has planning and the fire warden and that space into this new building. So that as far as the public was concerned, um, all the county services would be located in the same space. There would be ample parking, both for employees and um, the public who would be there doing business with those county service offices. And then within the courthouse, part of the reason this discussion started is it's likely that within the next five to 10 years, we don't really have a timeline, but we know that it's likely that it is coming. Um, we will need a second district court judge. And the courts all need to be in the same building. And as you're all aware, we do not have space in the current courthouse, even for our existing personnel that work out of the courthouse. Um, so we started looking at doing things. And so then with that move, it would move, it would free up if we were to do that building. It would free up more space in there. So the office that our office currently rents that houses Matt and I in the civil division, our discovery and victim witness would all move into the courthouse. There'd be room in the courthouse for drug court and potentially the public defenders as well, as well as having space or being able to make space for a second district court building, which does not have to be as large as the first district court building. There are some options that we haven't gotten fully into other than a couple of calls a couple of years ago. Um, so that is where we are. Jake has run the numbers on the space that we are looking at. And if he's there, he can talk through more of those with you. If he's not, um, we, what I can tell you is we do not have all the money right now. We have some of the grant money that was moved or I guess grant money, the ARPA money that was moved from payroll. Where ARPA paid the payroll and we put some of that money aside. We have some of that money. We have some other monies that have come in that have been saved and Bailey can get you a better idea of the exact numbers. But to be able to facilitate this at all beyond the purchase, we have money now that would purchase the land and could start on some of the infrastructure things. But it would require the county building being on the set tax that's next to come up likely in 2026.
Jake's not in the room, by the way.
That's, I saw Bailey not shaking her head. Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Um, so, and this is part of what we had talked about when we initially started this plan and looking at expanding Beach Street. And we had the architects, RFP out architects and engineers. And there were some preliminary discussions with, um, some of the department heads. The architects and engineers came and walked through the courthouse and I believe talked to most everybody in the courthouse who would be moving into that new county services building to start getting an idea of space needs, flow, layout, those kinds of things. We did not get very far with that. That contract has been paused, a rep design out of Sheridan. I think they also have an off- office in Casper and maybe Cheyenne. Um, but they have put it on hold until we were able to figure out if we were going to be able to move forward in a different direction than we had initially planned, or if ultimately we're just going to need to cancel it and just pay them for the time that they've already spent, which I believe we've maybe paid a little of. Um, so that's where we are with that. Um, and the other project is one that Sheriff and I believe Pete had talked to the city about. And so I'll let them speak to that. But if anybody has any questions for me that I haven't answered yet, I'm happy to do that.
Did that include, include the coroner's office?
Yeah.
Could. Well, they're not in the annex anymore. They're, they're at 501. So, and they are public service. We see a lot of public interaction there, so.
Well, yeah, we would want everybody.
Yeah.
Yep. We would move them and, right? And that new facility also, since I heard you, Adam, would have IT space, knowing that you'd have a master responsibility there. So if you haven't already talked to everybody, that's something where we, you would be wrapped into the process as soon as we have an actual direction to make sure that your needs is met or are met as well.
Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead on yours, Pete?
Sure. Yeah, I guess I can explain the project if I are in.
Oh, okay. You moved and I didn't see.
No, that's fine. Uh, so the project on our end is similar problem, different solution to what, uh, Jennifer talked about. We know that there's not enough space in the courthouse for everything that we have. Um, especially if we do need a future expansion of, uh, a second judicial district court here in Albany County. And so, um, we looked at essentially making a public safety building, uh, which would move out um, sheriff's office, prosecutors, public defenders, uh, district district court, coroner's office, um, and consolidating it on to, um, possibly a future expansion of the detention center. In those conversations that we had, um, the city is also looking to possibly expand or relocate their public safety offices as well. Um, let LPD and, um, possibly expand fire station one. Uh, we came together and discussed that, um, because there is a potential to look at a possible public funding option in the next couple of years. Um, the city has already budgeted for site assessment specifically for public safety buildings. Uh, and they agreed to involve Albany County in those site assessments. So the city is not just going to build, um, a joint public safety building. The city would be essentially a joint public safety building for all of them. So the last update that I got last week is that the city planner was looking to sign the contract for that and then get started on, uh, either possibly this week or next week on those site assessments. So that site assessment is going to encompass, um, a variety of different solutions, looking at sites that are suitable for either an expansion of the property that we already have, new sites to purchase new land and build new buildings on, or other existing sites or, or, um, other options, but it's land that either the city or the county already owns or or a new construction, new building. Um, the instructions that I gave them with the meeting is that to keep costs down, either expanding on land that we already currently own city and county, or expanding up to the buildings that we already currently occupy will always keep your costs at least 60% lower than a brand new construction. Either on land that we currently own or happen to buy land and construct a new building in its entirety. So, so that's where we are with that. We're looking at a, essentially a joint public safety building altogether involving city and county. Exploring what those options might look like.
So I guess I would say that this is probably just an exploratory discussion. And, um, so we just want to know what the department heads and elected officials are thinking. And we want ideas. And so I'd like to hear from everybody. And it's dead silent. Tracy.
Um, I think we definitely need room. I mean, being a plate change year, I don't know that everybody's been in my office, but we live around nine pallets of boxes. So it's not very, um, you watch where you walk. Yeah, and, and, but we have to still remain ADA compliant with those properties too. But one of my casual observations is the county services, such as second floor and all the non-court related, we serve 100% of the county. Where maybe this, you know, the, the court related things do not. Um, and just when you say there's a 60% cost savings and the specific purpose tax, you requested 25 million for the justice and period expansion. Whereas the new building for the courthouse or the county services is 30 million and that is not 60% savings. So I don't see a greater savings by that in my just initial observation here. But that's just some initial thoughts, but we do need room somewhere, somehow. In the parking here, if we go onto address with the center, that just congests the parking for our customers who the greater majority visit the second floor. And we hear about how bad parking is constantly. So those are my thoughts.
Parking is a major, major problem.
From, from the sheriff's office, if you were to build a new jail and public safety building, that cost is going to be E5 million plus. Just on a, on a brand new plot of land. Um, the request that we put in there was approximately 25 million, which is the expansion on to the, um, on to the existing footprint of the, of the jail to incorporate all of those services. We've talked in other work sessions and other meetings that that's a, that initial plan is a three-phase building plan where we expand on to the jail, um, and consolidate public safety. Um, the second one would be then two different types of renovations to the courthouse. Once the courts and all the judicial uh, offices that we have at the courthouse leave, there's no reason to have those still located in the courthouse. So there'd be a redesign, uh, within the courthouse to make that space more viable and efficient for the current offices there. Um, and then also because we're looking to possibly build on that parking lot, um, we would have to essentially construct a new parking lot. Um, what are the parking lots? We already, like I said, took a preliminary look. That new parking lot would, um, either be relocated to one of the other city parking lots that we have, or we would expand that parking lot on South Lawn.
So just to follow along those lines of remodeling the courthouse, should your plan go forward? The third floor district court, is that not a historic? I mean, that would be a.
It, there is.
I, I, I don't know.
From the, um, from the research that we did, I, I don't believe that this has the, those types of historical markers on the building itself. The building's been renovated multiple times and things, so there's not the constraints to renovate it again to, you know, however it is that we need it.
The second courthouse, the first one, bring that.
But there used to be the jail on the fourth floor. There used to be a lot of things.
Well, the sheriff used to live up there.
That's right.
This used to be circuit court here.
Right.
When I started here.
So we've been able to, like I said, it doesn't have that same historic distinction as it, as they do on other buildings. So like I said, those, those are those preliminary ideas, that site study, that site assessment that's going to, will give us a much greater picture of, of what it is, of what the options are. I will tell you though, that anybody that does a site study, especially for that joint building, there's going to be a few things that they are going to say. And it's the same things that I've echoed here, where it's always going to be a much more cost effective to build on property that you already own. Um, when they do that site assessment, they're going to look at the 400 block of Iverson on there where the city owns roughly about 75% of it. And then the county owns the other 25% of it. They're probably going to say that that's probably a good site to, to build on as well, since they already have it. So.
Which block of Ivensen?
400.
400 or 400, thought you said 100. I'm going, well, I don't think, I think that's mostly private.
When they look at that, like I said, jail, jail takes up about 25 to 35% of that block. The rest is all city, which is fire station one.
Right.
Their annex building, their city. So, and then it's public parking lot, which is also land owned by the city. So like I said, there'll be other options that come out in that, in that site assessment. But I can guarantee you that anybody with their salt doing a, a site assessment is going to push that close to the top, at least for a public safety building.
So I just got a comment from the public and it is a suggestion that we sell the, the county buildings to the city and the county then turns around and builds their own buildings, which I think is a, is an interesting, uh, concept.
I think that's a second conversation that we would want to have in terms of a long-term uh, infrastructure plan in terms of the county possibly con- consolidating buildings. Um, and selling off some of their properties. I know we've had that discussion, uh, which has led into this discussion of, of where we want to relocate some of our offices. Uh, uh, and some of the services to, to the county. And I don't know if we want to do that here at this work session or not. But a, a long-term infrastructure plan is, is probably going to be pretty prudent for us to, to figure out in terms of what services we want to provide where, um, and, and how we can do that in the most efficient way with the space that we currently have or that we might, might have in the future.
Do you have any?
Well, I can speak on behalf of my office. In terms of space in my primary office, um, we're okay, although Amanda is of course up with HR, which makes it difficult. Um, so it would be nice for all of my staff to be under one roof or at least one space. Um, and as you all know, with early voting, we've outgrown our election building. Um, we've outgrown it. Um, and the hard part is that we store equipment there. And then when we start early voting, we have to move all of our equipment and lock it upstairs in the elections building, our election room up here. And then we have to move it back down. So there's a lot of moving of equipment. And as you all know, with any kind of equipment, it's really great to move it on, you know, concrete when it juggles and shakes and, um, it would be nice to have a storage space that is permanent to where we don't have to move it and a voting space that is separate that of our storage space. As you all know, you know, security of our election equipment is really important. And having it in one space and not having to move it back and forth would be really nice.
Could it be all in one building, just separate?
Like I even said, even if I had a second floor, I could store the equipment upstairs and we could vote in the main area. You know what I mean?
Right, okay, that's what I was wondering.
Even at that, it doesn't have to be in a separate space. We've just outgrown our space. And as you guys all know how, um, popular early voting is, as you saw the day before the election, the line, you know, all the way out to almost the jail, it's just become really, really popular for people who will vote early. And I don't know that that's going to change. Um, so that's, for me, just having that space i- in one building, like you said, Terry, it can be in the same building. That doesn't matter. It's just so that it's separated, so that we can keep it all in one place. We aren't, we are juggling it constantly throughout the election cycle, so. But my main office in itself, other than not being able to have Amanda is sufficient for, for now, for now. And we've digitized all of our land records. So if we do move or if we had to, I mean, we, we can look at storing our books off-site. Um, and maybe moving that vault that we have back in land into an office space because we have digitized everything. So that is something to think about too, when we think about space, um, but.
There is some regulation on where you can keep that.
They, you are correct. Well, it's supposed to be, you know, temperature controlled and all of that, so yes.
But it has to be within, uh, the county's, or the courthouse structure, I believe by statute.
Yeah, because the, like the, I know Carbon County, they have a vault where they have theirs all locked in. But you know, I don't think that they moved all of theirs with them. I don't know if it's still, I don't know where Gwen, I guess it's not Gwen anymore, Lisa stores all of their books, because they do not have it in their new office. Um, so I don't know where they stored, I can check.
Unless if we did a new building, then that would all just go with the clerk to.
Or once it's digitized, it's going to be off-site.
That's what I'm saying, because we've got it all digitized now. I think that it can be off-site is where it can be. We would keep some books, but we wouldn't have to keep all of them. I mean, we would keep them, of course, but not in, within the office. So that's frees up space for our office though too, so.
Jennifer, are you still on?
I am.
Uh, so who is dictating the second courtroom?
So it comes from surveys that the state Supreme Court does every couple of years based on caseload. And so the Supreme Court does the surveys and then they have to go to the legislature for funding. And it's prioritized based on which counties have a caseload that is skewed the highest. So there are several counties ahead of us where their judge's caseload is at like 1.36% or 136% of what it's, you know, should be at 100%. It's at 136. So they're overworked, so they need to add those second courts. When we started.
There is appropriation though that we can count on.
No.
Count no.
There's appropriation for the judge. There's appropriation for the judge and the salaries and things that come with the judge. However, statutorily, it is the responsibility of the county to provide court space. And I believe the furnishings for that space. I don't know if the state funds the furnishings for the courtroom, but we have to provide the space and like the furnishings for the offices.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions for me? I, we are headed out here shortly and I don't have great cell service once I leave the house.
I think, yeah, that is. As soon as you get off, we'll have questions, you know?
I know. If you do, send me an email and I'll get back to anybody the end of this week.
This isn't a, a really brus- brisk discussion, so you're probably okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Uh-huh, bye-bye.
David.
Oh yeah, I'll just add the, the department's perspective. We love our building. It's odd, but it's nice. It fits everything we need. Um, the drawbacks are, is, you know, we have people come in and they need certain things. We send them to the courthouse, people show up to the courthouse, they send them to us. And so this, the convenience factor is not great. Um, same with staff, we have to be back and forth. Sorry. Sorry, get over cold.
And that cough hangs on and hangs on. Those thoughts we've had it, no.
That's a layup.
Oh, okay. Adam.
Just a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. Um, we've had security audits done before, right on courthouse security, um, where Homeland comes over and kind of does an election security audit as well as a daily business audit. I believe there's findings on that related to the open structure and the open communications that we have with a lot of the public offices. Uh, the ease of availability to ingress and egress into those offices with really no deflection outside of a small lanyard barrier. Um, is one thing to maybe speak to. I remember, I'm going off memory, so please correct me if I'm wrong later. And I'm just trying to go off of this and things that I've seen there. Um, and of course, the, the runout on the elections. This, this building also has several ADA shortcom- shortcomings and weird oddities that come with it, right? It was, you know, the baseline design, um, especially when you're looking at that large. The majority of our county exterior facilities are, I'm going to say annex facilities, uh, planning, I'd say public health in some degree. Um, also have ADA shortcomings. Um, and then it, uh, kind of tr- transitioning there. Uh, when you look at the utility interconnects and the costing, right? We, we did a good thing. We've got a lot of the circuits prepaid and upfront, but when we have to start working those forward, right? That's, you know, a good chunk of money per circuit. Um, when we're able to consolidate those costs, it would be a good amount. I would say, I think it's about 650 per circuit per month. Um, and when you look at all those auxiliary sites, that's a decent chunk of change on a monthly basis that you could consolidate into a, a single stream. Um, and I mean, but that also is seen on both sides of this equation, right? And either the, the law enforcement consolidation or the public safety consolidation or the public services consolidation. It's kind of what I'm going to call the two projects there, um, because both are slightly disjointed. Um, so your parking, right? We, we all know there's not enough here. We also know that there's a severe lack both at public health and planning. And then I normally have to circle on both initiatives to do anything there. Um, and then, I mean, I kind of understand in, in our case, we may end up in a split office scenario or a, a primary office with a dispatching circumstance. Um, either of that, I'd rather do a primary office with a dispatching circumstance. If a, you know, facility is made in ground, it's, it's easier in that regard so that we can kind of group efforts and consolidate. Um, I think we've shown that we can respond across, it's Laramie, it's a five-minute commute for everything, so.
15.
Fair, okay. On a, on a, on a windy, blowy, snowy day, right? Um, that's the only thing I would ask is that you just allow us to stay as a single unit from the IT perspective and not split assets across two offices and then trying to manage that workload and the personnel load across both. Um, and then the other thing that I had online that came up as we were talking here is, um, you know, the, I think there's a lot of benefit in the public service project initiative. I, the only worry I have is it leans heavily on essentially a taxpayer initiative. And, and I, I do worry that I don't know if the state and our, and our people will be supportive. And so I, I don't, I'd love to see land purchased and, and initiative started and growing and maybe draw up plans so that we have something and we can present on it. Um, I find a work session here very difficult on anything because there, we're talking in a lot of isms instead of actual plan set. And, and so, you know, I, I, it's great that we're coming together and talking before everything's off the ground, but at the same time, um, wheels to meal sort of thing. So that's what I have currently. Is there any questions for me?
No, you have primary servers at 501 and you have another one in town?
Yeah, we have a D, uh, DR site at Search and Rescue.
Okay, that's what I, I could.
And so the new facility, we would ask that we could either make that the new primary or we'd have replicating. We'd have less of a, a workload here. So from a technology standpoint, if, if this becomes a justice center, right? Your court systems already have the DMarks here in the facility as well as they're switching in all their interconnects, right? We would pull equipment to make availability for them. And they have interconnects across both floors. If we're not using them, you know, it's, it could easily be given to them so that there's one less thing that they have to contract and service charge there um, for availability. Um, trying to think what else, what we provide in terms of the courts is phone system. And then essentially power and access to the wall, going back to the wall then hits their infrastructure. So there is that segmentation there, so. Uh, but the phones are an overlapping issue. It's not the same. But the phones are an overlapping issue. It's not the same in every county. It's weird grandfatheredness and who negotiated what and did what where. Sometimes ETS supports it, sometimes they don't. I'm just continuing on our current relationship there and something that will be planned. So we'll still, I mean, of course, there's still gonna be resources here for the offices that support the courts and, and that, but I think there. We could probably shift the primary core to the new facility as the, the public. Uh, relations upside and that workload and the, the stations that are needing would be the primary bulk of use, so. To answer that question, okay. Awesome. That's what I had on my mind in some of these conversations.
I think, I think that you're right. This is kind of weird, but I think we need to have an opportunity for people to speak up and. And say whatever they'd like to say and so they're not being isolated.
I definitely, I mean, I don't wanna see. The public or the public safety project go in the direction that we saw kind of out of the EOC. Of course, I'm coming in second hand off of that, right? It was well done and built. Prior to me and anything but the problems that we've had and some of the things that Kate has reported in that relationship between that interrupt that goes on there. You know, I would, I would, I don't wanna see that, but I think if there's oversight and there, there's good accountability, it certainly could be positive in both perspectives, so. Both projects, I think, would benefit the user and the, the person of Albany County greatly. Just what we wanna prioritize. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
I guess, do we have an idea if Svet's gonna go on, if we're actually gonna go out for it? Do you have an update on Svet at all?
So we're getting close to collect, collection. In total, let me bring up that worksheet.
And this is for the twenty eighteen Svet, right?
Sheriff, you probably have by far the largest county infrastructure requirements. Do you have enough space? Jail, parking, I know impound's an issue. Or we could save some county dollars, impounding towed vehicles. Do we physically?
In terms of, in terms of immediate space, no. In terms of future space. Not really there either. So the jail, jail is essentially two and a half stories when it was built in nineteen ninety two. They ran out of money to finish the third story. Infrastructure's already there to expand that.
That's why I thought you could put another pod on.
That third story to a pod, so we have sixty six beds in there. Our average daily population is about fifty four. So we have a, a few extra beds, but if population increases. We'll run out of space. And fairly quickly. So the expansion for the jail is a small one. Essentially adding that extra pot will add anywhere between. Twenty five to forty beds, and that should be good. For that expected population growth, at least for the next twenty to twenty five years. The office space that we have for the sheriff's office. Just on the patrol side alone, you know, we have about. Twenty five people, and then I have an office that. That basically only has, what, seven offices in there? And so we've been short on space. So. Like, so we don't, we don't really have any meeting space. We have to utilize different other spaces for, for training and most of the other things. So. That's part of the reason why we're looking to. To expand, essentially. Kind of remove those services from the courthouse and, and get a space that's much more efficient for us. That we are chat. It makes sense. I don't know how I feel about it quite yet, but it does make sense to consolidate public safety services. The city is looking to expand or relocate. It doesn't make sense from the county and the city to essentially fight with each other. For that space or for those available dollars on there as well when we could. Easily work together, so. We already have some of those city, uh, city and county services. That, that we have jointly together. Lark Communications is within the jail already. Some of the plans that we left there consolidated. Bringing EMA. On board so that they're not offsite as well. Mainly that work is with the county, but they do work in the city as well, so. So like I said, in terms of our space, no, we don't. Ever since I've got, that space hasn't been adequate enough. To give an example, you know. UWPD's one fourth the size of my share. You know. They have a whole city block, so. Just example, not, not from a funding model or anything like that, but that's fifteen sworn officers. I have fifty two sworn downs. So. Kind of the same, same situation with. With the city of Laramie, city Laramie has fifty six sworn officers. They have kind of their own space to take care of everything. It's a little bit of a larger footprint than mine. Like I said, for the sheriff's office, we have other statutory responsibilities that both. Local PE and university PE don't, don't have. In terms of running a jail, search and rescue. Courts of record, court of security. Election security, all of those things, so. We're pretty hampered in space, like I said, we're, we're in a corner in the basement. We try and make do with what we got, but it is by no means adequate in any way.
Do you have meeting space out of your SAR building?
Yes. Which is, yes, we have.
How full is the SAR building, I guess, is the?
The bays are full. The meeting space that we talk about is literally just an open area with some folding tables. And some folding chairs that we put up there, so. Search and rescue volunteers have their meetings there. We have certain trainings. That we have there too, but I wouldn't call it a meeting space. I would call it an open section in a pole barn. That we make a meeting space. About the best way that I can describe it.
Sheriff, as you, there are justice centers around. Wyoming, Douglas, I believe is. Did you talk to, have you talked to them and how did those things work?
I have. I've been able to tour. Was able to tour Sweetwater Counties. They built theirs in two thousand seventeen. That's a fairly large footprint outside of town. It has three, four, four separate buildings, say, I don't, jail, sheriff's office. Their courthouse, and their search and rescue building there. Like I said, that's a very large footprint that they leased the land from the BLM. Back in two thousand seventeen, they got it as a smoking deal for like, I think it was like twenty seven. On there. Keep in mind, that's almost ten years ago. Douglas, Converse County just consolidated all of their stuff. I think they're done. I know that they're moved in.
They're done.
They're done with construction there. I wanna say that that was close to eighty million dollars. They also brought in YDOT on the same footprint. On theirs. Neutronic County and Laramie County has, uh, Neutronic County's still looking to consolidate, but they. Basically consolidate theirs on their same kind of county footprint to where they have police and sheriff's office on kind of the same blocks. Laramie County has the same thing. I'll be heading there here shortly. At their, their new police department, which is kind of right across the street. Their sheriff's office and jail, so. So we've looked at it. But with the construction costs that there are, I mean, like I said. Especially when it comes to a new jail build. You build it on a new site and you build a new jail with public safety center down there. That cost goes through. So, expanding on the, the existing footprint that you have on there, like I said, your costs come, come way down. Especially if it's on land that you already own.
Any other questions?
Not for the sheriff.
I don't know, it's kind of like. When you got an old car, you wanna trade it in and buy that shiny new one. For the sheriffs and, and the justice department, or do you try and? Fix up and remodel this, make it work. Rudden Bridge, we really don't deal in. We have our own offsite, so this is. A huge deal for the Rudden Bridge Department. But maybe as a, the way I look at it is a. Taxpayer. If, if you park along the street here and you try and get out of your vehicle. You know, we don't have any parking here. That's a huge problem. And I've been to some of the other, other places where, you know, they have like the. Like, better term, the Walmart parking or the, you know, where you pull up in this little nice. Thirty parking spaces or whatever you get out, it's. Less apt to slip and fall or. Those kind of issues, so I personally really think we need a. Facility for the county offices. Storage, the election stuff, the. Faces plates, probably paper, all that kind of stuff. I remember when I first started here and this was, you know, all the remodeling's done that. We've been tearing down and rebuilding and tearing down and rebuilding. It would be nice to just. Build a nice facility that has all the technology. The storage places that are needed, the offices where everybody. Can basically come to one place and get all their county work done or. What they need to do, whether it's planning, assessor. Clerk's office. I do get nervous. When I hear the. Counties, city working together, so I know that's all a grandiose plan. But I think eventually what happens is somebody. I'll just say, the city starts taking over and control on everything. And they have their demands and the county gets left out quite a few times on some of it, so. I would personally just didn't see, let's go for a county facility. Owned by Albany County.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else? Did you get Taylor's?
Yeah, you want me to go back to the specific purpose tax? Okay. So these numbers are as of the end of December because I was out at the end of January, so I haven't got January done yet, but. The specific purpose tax should be collected. Every take by July of twenty twenty six, so then the first available election timeframe would be August of twenty six. That looks frowny over there on that side of the room. But twenty twenty six, we'll also see the fifth penny come up on the ballot and that'll be in November. In November, so I don't know if we want to pursue those at the same time. Or not, and given this legislative cycle, we. They have a good chance at it or we may not.
So I guess with the fifth penny and the Svet tax and everything else. How much of the, the twenty eighteen run on Svet tax did we have to go ask to use from the city or river or any of that?
So the percentage, the city of Laramie got sixty four point one five percent of the total. The grand total, let me start with that. The grand total of the initiative for everybody was sixty five million, five hundred and eighty two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Like I said, the city got sixty four point one five, the town of Rock River got six point eight eight. Albany County got eighteen point one nine percent, and then the Laramie Regional Airport got ten point seven seven, which. That project is complete in, in its entirety, so I, I mean, that ten percent cuz it reallocated through. Whatever other.
Okay, and then how much did the fifth penny bring in? In this last cycle so far, you know?
Uh, the fifth penny for the county collections, I believe, was in the neighborhood of one point two or one point three million.
Oh, just county?
Yeah, I don't, um, the city gets their scent directly. On the fifth penny and on the, the sixth penny, the county gets all of it and then we distribute it out. So I don't know. The Department of Revenue has all those reports out there, Tanner, so you people look at. Excuse me, go look it up. I just don't have that.
I was just curious on if you do go out for both in November, I mean, August and then November, I don't know. However, that timeline works out. How much of the puzzle if we're asking for, because the fairgrounds is gonna need a chunk for our deferred maintenance that we're dealing with. Now I'm looking for funds for, so. I guess what. I'm wondering is for the thirty million dollar building and then the twenty five million for. Sheriff's Department, what cut of that? I mean, we're not gonna.
So all the requests that were submitted when I sent out that email of everybody's wish list. The grand total is sixty two million, one hundred and twenty five thousand. That's about equal to. Nearly what the county or the city rather got in that last, in that twenty eighteen Svet. The fairgrounds alone, you guys were three point one seven five million with that update that we made.
It went down.
Last week. And then, yeah, we took out the, the truck and we added. Um, I think. I think of this, though, I, in my mind, what I'm kind of hearing is it's an either or for the thirty million for the new services building. Or the twenty five million for the, the Justice Center building. But we'd also have to consider monies. To revamp this building for whoever stays here. Right. Did include that.
The thirty million does?
Yeah, I mean, with the, with some of the money that we already have. I mean, Jake gave me twenty five million. I've just bumped it up because. Um, but that should be, but again. Bumps up even more, I don't know, but other way it sits right now, that would include.
Did either of these include the, like, real estate assessment for the sale of the essentially consolidated facilities?
So we. Cuz it would have to be after the fact. And the other thing to take into consideration is. I mean, we get collections every month, but we can't just monthly plan to pay for a new building. Whichever building or whatever project it is, we're gonna have to bond this, so there's gonna be the bonding cost. Which municipal bonds, general obligation bonds, you know, have a lower interest. Rate price tag compared to, you know. Private sector bonds because of the tax exempt status of them, but. It's still a cost that we have to calculate in, so if we want thirty million, we probably need to ask for thirty five million. If we're gonna bond it. Um, some of, like, the fairgrounds needs are more immediate. We probably need to let that bond in some of the things.
That was gonna be my next question is, do we have some bonds available from the airport currently? Or are those all still soaked up?
So the debt capacity of the county is two percent of assessed valuation within the county. So if we bonded, we don't even have enough to bond this. One billion.
And that's where my mind is going with all of these questions.
Even if all the bonds are paid off that are out there right now cuz the county has. We issued one point five seven five million in bonds and the airport was another five million. Even if all those bonds are paid off, we don't have enough bonding capacity or debt capacity to do all of this.
Right, and that was, that's kind of where my question, line of questioning is going between that and, I guess, in previous Svet taxes. Has the city traditionally always gotten over fifty percent of that and is there, or do you go, is there a meeting that goes into and you negotiate the, the total? Because. And is there, or do you go, is there a meeting that goes into and you negotiate the, the total because? The city getting sixty four percent, but then the counties. I mean, to me, that's a little lopsided. Um, and it should be.
Sound like the Blue Sky Program.
But I'm wondering if that goes into discussions on how much the county can get out of that each time. Or if traditionally the city has gotten over fifty percent?
It's all a negotiation. It's not necessarily like the city has to have more. It's a negotiation between the three entities. So the three entities being Rock River, the city of Laramie and Albany County, y'all have to come to the table and agree. On the projects that you're going to present to the voters and hope that they're all, um. You know, will accept it and, and wanted.
Okay, that was my question. I just didn't know if it was.
That, that spit taxes into, when you, when you go to the ballot, they're taller than that.
Right.
They don't get to.
Menu style, they can't do like a range choice. But that sounds like a nightmare for.
Well, it's a nightmare and, and. They're a lot less successful.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then it, it is, I mean, it's called specific purpose tax for a reason. So, you know, like Paul used Rob as. Um, as an example, in the twenty eighteen, we had to go forward with specific roads that he wanted to work on. Now that we're collecting that tax, maybe he needs a, a different road. But it is not listed on that ballot. He can't use it for that. You know, if it's, um, not for the range arena, you can't use it for that.
Right.
And those kind of things. So it's. That's why the ballot, I think, was two or three stages long in twenty eighteen. That they had.
Would we get enough for Svet if that passes and would we get enough for Fifth Penny? To do these projects in conjunction with what the city wants to do in their entirety? Because I mean, I'm going to continue to look for other sources for. Our needs because they are more immediate than, you know, November twenty sixth for some of them. Um, but that's kind of where my line of questioning was going with that whole thing was. Do we have enough in both of those to pay for these projects or could we potentially?
So looking back from two thousand one, two thousand and ten and twenty eighteen Svet taxes. Um. The, so in two thousand one, the county, the city rather, um, got seventy eight, county eighteen, Rock River three percent. Those are rounding. Um, twenty ten, the city got sixty six, county got twenty five, Rock River got eight, and then I gave you the percentages for the. Twenty eighteen already, but.
Yes.
I mean, they do get the lion's share because, you know, the majority of the county population does reside within the city. And I think that was always their reasoning. Not that that has to hold true every.
Sure.
Um. Maybe I looked at. Yeah, fine. I have a worksheet where I looked at what. At using the, the rate of inflation for property tax. And escalating it no more than the four percent cap that's already in place right now with property tax. Uh, what our potential. Debt capacity would be when we pay this off. And I am, I'm in the hardest time finding that because it's been. Hot minutes since I made that worksheet.
Not to throw a cold blanket on this discussion, but if anybody's paying attention to the legislature, um. This commission and other entities will have much less money to deal with. Um, and so. I don't know what that means. We all voted for those folks, but, um. There'll be hard choices if it appears coming to this commission. And some other special districts, um, in the not too distant future, um, so.
Oh, I don't think that's cold water. I think that's just reality.
So the, the big bill, just a peek. Maybe take some water, put a damp towel off. Um, Senate file sixty nine did change considerably last week. So instead of the fifty percent off, directly off of the assessed valuation or the fair market value, I can't remember which one it was. Uh, Chelsea's more of an expert on that, but. It would be fifty percent off the amount of increase from the twenty nineteen valuation to the twenty twenty four. So if your property taxes in that time period went up a thousand dollars. Or your assessment went up a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. It also comes, last I heard, with a full backfill. But.
But that's through the House on Thursday and that's the Senate file, so it still has to go back to the Senate, um.
Yeah, and there's other bills out there that are, um, just as, um.
Devastating.
To county finances. As that one.
I guess my point is we're not going to have extra money after this legislation is done. It would be my concern. And then this county requires direct aid, um, to balance its books every year. Um, and I think that has to be considered into this. Um, so not, not that you shouldn't, right? I'm just. Saying this is the world we live in.
Yes, there are a lot of what ifs out there and. Considering, I mean, we're not one of the, the wealthier counties and we don't have a lot of minerals. Until rare earths maybe comes about. But, uh, we only have six months of reserves, so all else is away. We can live for six months.
Yeah, and that took what? Few years to build? Six months?
I feel like when Jackie said, when she always said when she started, they had like five hundred dollars in reserves or something. I've, um, been here twenty one years and when I started, I want to say we had a little over a hundred thousand, so. Now we have like about twelve million, which, which is.
Amazing that we've been able to do that.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Yes, I would just say from the HR side, our needs are pretty small. We're small but mighty in our offices, I like to say. Uh, but one thing we do need to consider whether we revamp this office or, or this building or. Have a separate building is there are some things, uh, that we're not compliant with, with federal law. For, for example, the Pump Act, we don't have a place for nursing mothers to be able to go in and nurse. Right now, we make it, I mean, they, we let the news and Amanda's office, my office, whatever, but there are some things that. Need to be considered as we move forward to make sure that we're compliant ADA accommodations for all, a lot of our buildings is another huge one that. From an HR side that I'm. Are always clicking away.
Right, that's, that's why we're doing this meeting is to.
Right.
Um. Have everybody thinking about it and keeping track.
Add to that, I have a, a nursing mother who goes to our license plate storage room.
Yeah.
Um, down here in the basement, which is.
Oh.
Always lovely.
We've used our closet.
At any point, that can become a loss for us.
I used the bathroom.
Just looking at what you're trying to consolidate here, um. I don't know, I'm just trying to quickly do the office allocations in my head, plus the expansion of district court. Plus whatever workload that puts on the clerk of district court, um, and the adoption of that workload and maybe this, you know, I don't know, an expansion there. Um. Really, if you look at this from an either or perspective, um, I still think it's going to be an initial investment that still falls short. Um, you're still not going to have enough space for those consolidation apps. You, you really have to vote. Um, to truly be successful and to put a fifteen year step forward. Uh, that's the only way I'm seeing that happen. I'm, you know, to allow elections infrastructure to. Take on the loaded capacity and enact the public infrastructure, both on the safety side, the parking side, the interaction aspect, our meetings and our outreach. All the way to, I mean, you're thinking of leaving, bringing in public defenders here, plus the attorneys that stay that are already at capacity. And in another office that now need to take over two office space, plus another courtroom that's maybe half that. It, it just doesn't add up. You have to vote. Uh, and you know, okay, you expand across the parking lots, that gives a shelter set, maybe a two tier facility plus your bond set. I mean, that's what gives you your fifteen year timeline. Um, plus the new facility, but I, I. If it's daring in the cards, it's the only way we'll succeed. That's mine.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
So for EMA, we can pretty much work anywhere. We're not open to the public. Um, but right now we are probably the furthest removed over in Station Three. Um, our offices are there, our mail comes here, our equipment's at search and rescue in Roden Bridge. So for us having a home base. Perfectly in a county facility would be.
How much space do you need, Kay?
Not much, um, three actual offices, meeting space, E O C area, and then some storage. Um, and then we have equipment that has to be outside, our generators and trailers and stuff.
And those are at the SAR's building?
Yeah.
The equipment at the SAR will probably stay there, but they're looking anywhere between. Maybe fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet.
Of storage or office space?
And then some storage.
Right now we bounce around and it works, but we'd like to have a home.
Sure.
There's quite a bit of storage at SAR just from all the different departments.
Yeah, the, that SAR lot is essentially the storage lot for potential.
And has been since it was built.
And, and it still will be. I mean, we've got plenty of space up there, so, um. But yes, that is a catch off for the county.
So does there, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Can I chime in? Can you guys hear me?
Of course you can.
Thank you. Sorry I had to appear virtually. Um, I know we are obviously tiny as well in the grand scheme of things. But, um, as the board knows, we went through heck, um, over the last couple of years with space. And getting somewhat ADA, um, accessible, um. The building that we're in right now is great and we do have a couple of year lease, but long term. I, as everybody has presented, you know, being with the courts, with the jail. Um, if the public defender is an option, that would be great. Um, that would obviously would be ideal. Our rent is being paid with match funds, um, for our grants, um, and those match funds coming from the county, so. While I know that's kind of pennies on the dollar, um, it's, you know, forty four hundred dollars a month that we're paying, um, space wise. The.
I'm sorry, how much are you paying?
Forty four hundred dollars a month.
I, I.
Yeah, um, and space wise, we struggled, um, being able to accommodate having. A courtroom that we were able to hold our juvenile court in regularly. Um, maybe with, you know, an additional courtroom down the road, that would be better. Uh, but it was something that we were never able to do on a consistent basis. From week to week, we would get bounced from commissioners' room to circuit court to district court to not having court anywhere. Um, so having some set space would be outstanding, um, and then of course, in the ability to. Uh, possibly expand. Treatment courts down the road, um, as Bailey knows, I'm always on the hunt, not this year, but maybe down the road. You know, that space for us would be big, so just my two cents.
Thank you, Heather.
We've moved drug court. Three times, just with, since my tenure over the last four years.
Oh, shoot, since I got involved twenty years ago, it's moved seven times, I think.
Yeah, you are kind of the stepchild, aren't you?
Hundred percent, or the nomads out there.
Okay, any other comments? I think it was good to hear from everybody. Thank you.
And if you think of anything creative wise, otherwise emails, talk to us.
Yep.
Or, yeah.
But at least it gets everybody thinking and, and.
Is there, I guess, is there like a homework takeaway or? I don't know. I'm, I'm just looking for something that in terms of the forward progress.
I'm just, I want to compile a spreadsheet of.
You need a matrix on.
I, I, well, just how many buildings we actually have, how many structures are we paying on out there or trying to maintain? Okay, and then if there's a cost savings at all to it. Um, I realize if we're having to add a courtroom and it's unfunded. Um, from the state, then are we looking, we're not looking at having two jury trials at a time. I don't think we have to even have the staffing for that. Or would have the staffing for that, so.
Would.
You would have two jury.
Yeah, that potential. There is that potential to have it and two different district courts.
But we don't necessarily need the grandiose size that we have now.
No.
The Supreme Court has like a minimum stop of what size the courtroom needs to be.
Okay.
And Jennifer has those. I don't have them.
I'm just trying to figure out what we can do in this existing structure and what would move offsite or, because we're, you're right, we're maxed out. We can't. Trying to keep the, the courthouse in its container now is just not.
Most, most courtrooms, even new, new courtrooms, look pretty similar to.
This.
This space or circuit court on the fourth floor. I, I don't see too many courts that look like our district or.
Yeah.
As, as current setup now.
Well, I've even seen some that have been remodeled and circuit court is considerably smaller. I mean, there's two courtrooms in, in that. Size of space.
Yeah.
Um, and they're doing initials for what, six or however many guys they can pack into the courtroom at a time, so.
So when you're looking at essentially expanding a footprint, um, on there, you know, it's. It's not as expansive as you would think in terms of.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we would have a third court.
I'm just trying to figure out if the second floor could stay primarily as is and move attorneys up. I'm just trying to figure in my head where we can jockey people around without having a remodel cost.
You have that whole space. I mean, you have a court that takes two floors. And so that's going to have to be a conversation on the renovation of this building, trying to actually make it two floors instead of. A bunch of wasted space.
Yeah. And I think, Rob, you were working for Roden Bridge when that, because you, Roden Bridge did a lot of the demo.
Oh, yeah, got in trouble from the judge a few times.
Oh, yeah, I did too.
And I guess for me, what offices make sense being closer together, um, I, you know, hearing from. Heather that being with public defenders would make life easier is a useful thing to know, um. Like, you can figure out that, you know, sheriff's office with the attorneys and that stuff, but some of those stuff, does clerk make. Sense right next to treasurer or does that not make sense? And is the treasure, is the assessor in there somewhere? Um, or is that closer to the planning office? So all of those things that I don't deal with on a daily basis.
Yeah.
Truly useful.
I never even thought about planning needing to be closer to.
Real estate.
Consult, yeah.
My office.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion? Maybe everybody get me their comments. I compile it all for you guys. Does that sound good to everybody?
That would be very helpful, I think, yeah.
It, it would at least be helpful to have an accurate, we need this X amount of square footage, X amount of office space, we have X amount of personnel. Or if there's any special considerations that you have and most have to start figuring out the Lego pieces to put it all together.
Okay, I'll send out an email and tell the department heads, like officials.
Do you want to take what was already given previously from the V Street planning? Or do you want us to review that? So it's all.
Let me take a look at that. Yeah, let me take a look at that and we'll go.
I think there's several answers there.
I'm sure, yeah. But they could have changed, you could have changed your mind, Adam. I mean.
No.
No changing minds, Adam. Okay, well, um. If there aren't any other comments, thank you so much for coming and participating in this. I think it's at least a baby step and we can brought up things to talk about, so thank you.